Good morning. So we have a work session today with Oliver and Jose and Keem. And I see the audience is full of our fire leadership.
Good morning, councilors, and Happy New Year to you all. For the record, Oliver Ojekon with me this morning is Bart Catching, who will be giving the presentation. But before that, just want to make a quick remark and then turn it over to Bart. Councilors, you may recall that you did receive a letter from the fire districts requesting that the council consider or the county consider amending Title 40 to provide opportunity for the fire district to assess fire impact fees is provided in Revised Code of Washington and also under the Growth Management Act. With that letter, we had a council time conversation with council, and at your direction, you asked staff to proceed with that request. And with the support of the county manager and council, we proceeded to go through the legislative process, and we had a work session with the planning commission. I believe that was on September 7th, followed by a hearing with the planning commission also on September 21st. They voted for two for council to approve the code changes that was made to Title 40, the section dealing with impact fees. Currently, that section provided for the county to assess impact fees for traffic, schools, and also for parks. And I would say that there is no fees or there are no fees proposed as part of this action. If the council were to approved the proposed code changes, any future assessment of impact fees by any of the fire districts will come at a later time. And as you can see, there are some of the fire district members that are here, but this is your work session. They will have an opportunity to speak at your public hearings to answer any specific questions you may have of them in terms of their capital facilities, planning, and their needs. So with that, let me turn it over to Bart to give you the presentation. As I indicated, the proposed code language is on the website for this project and also posted on the council grid for anyone to see what is being proposed and what the planning commission recommended the council to approve.
Well, good morning. My name is Bart Catching. I'm a planner in community planning. Thank you for that great introduction, Oliver, and that is a wonderful segue into my presentation here, which is primarily focused on just the code and regulatory compliance of these proposed code changes. As Oliver said, we're here to talk about the Fire District Impact Fee Code Update proposal. Just a little bit of background to ground us in where we are and why we're talking about this. You all probably know that the county is served by seven general fire districts as well as the cities that work within and with the fire districts. The laws from the state allow the fire districts to partially fund their public facilities with development impact fees. As Oliver mentioned, currently, we don't do that in this county. The new proposed code language for the impact fees would meet the GMA, the Growth Management Act, our comprehensive plan policies, as well as the applicable sections of the Washington Administrative Code, the WAC, and the Revised Code of Washington, RCW. Our impact fees that we currently have, such as schools, parks, and traffic, are found in County Code Chapter 40.6. So that's the part of the code that we're looking at proposed amendments for, and the fire districts are not part of that right now. Next slide, please. So a kind of fundamental thing to keep in mind as we're talking about this is that just like roads and school buildings and such, fire protection facilities, including the buildings and their implements and heavy equipment, are considered public facilities as a technical definition. And as such, public facilities are eligible for proportional funding through development impact fees. And as I just said, the county currently uses impact fees for traffic, parks, schools, but not for fire districts. But the GMA allows and state statute allow fire districts to use impact fees. And so the fire districts have been asking that this gets looked at closer as an additional funding source for them. Next slide, please. So this is just a little summary matrix of the primary code, proposed code amendments that would need to happen in 40.6 to implement this. And I don't need to read this verbatim to you unless you have specific questions, but it's five general areas. The first is to literally add the definition of fire districts to public facilities. We would need to add two new code sections, so we've just added placeholder code numbers, 050 and 060, to create the procedure and adopt the basic framework formula that then the capital facilities plans would apply under. And then in 030 and 090, it's just some more additional language to make fire districts part of the same laundry list that schools and parks and such are part of. And the fifth one is something that is important to keep in mind. There would need to be new interlocal agreements with all the fire districts, so that has to be part of the code changes as well. Next slide, please. As I mentioned a moment ago, you've got several areas of compliance to look at just technically to make sure that this would be acceptable to move forward with adding these fees. And so, starting with the Growth Management Act and our comprehensive plan, Goal 12 of the GMA, basically allows fire districts in the form of providing adequate public services. It's one of the core public safety aspects. Our comprehensive plan, Chapter 6, that focuses on capital facilities and utilities, implements Goal 12 of the GMA through several policies and strategies that, we won't recite those verbatim to you, but they're very clear in that they address impact fees. And if and when you decide to take this to hearing, then the staff report will have detailed analysis of those code sections, so you can look at that and see what those policies, how they directly apply to fire districts. And then Chapter 6 of the comp plan also has planned strategies, and one of those strategies is specifically fees and user charges and impact fees within the plan. I put some page numbers there so that they're easy reference if one wants to go into the comp plan and look. So as such, staff finds that adding fire impact fees would meet the GMA and the comp plan. Next slide, please. We also have the WAC and the RCW to consider with implementing new impact fees. WAC 365-196-850 authorizes counties to collect impact fees, and it has very specific language about how they can be done. It's kind of a three-part test, so to speak, and so they can only be for system improvements related to new development and proportionate share that can reasonably benefit new development. And so this is what all impact fees would need to meet, and the capital facilities plans that would come after this would flesh that out for each district if we got that far. The RCW 82.02.060 gives more specifics about what a local ordinance needs to look like and how the fee schedules would need to be. What we did in the proposed code changes that are Exhibit 1 in these materials is we did not try and reinvent the wheel at all. We used as much of the existing code language that has been in the county code for many years for schools and parks and just changed language and added as little as possible to make it work for fire districts. And so we find that the proposed code changes would meet the WAC and the RCW requirements for impact fees. Next slide, please. So in conclusion, and not to sound too redundant, the adoption of the fire impact fees, if they were adopted, would not be breaking any new ground. It would be in line with other impact fees for the other public facilities that have been in place and assessed for many, many years in this county with very little problem as far as I'm aware of. The codes, the code updates comply with GMA and the comp plan, the WAC and the RCW. As Oliver mentioned in his introductory comments, what we are proposing here is purely the Title 40 regulatory framework to allow the fees to be requested from the districts. And so this is the first step. It doesn't implement any fees itself. It's just a framework, and then there would need to be a capital facilities plan and an interlocal agreement from each district that would go through the entire public process from scratch before anything would change in the comp plan and fees would be implemented. So with that context, we recommend approval of these fees just as the framework to assess the fees and get it into Title 40. As Oliver said, the planning commission recommended approval at their hearing on September 21st. And so we are here before you, and we don't have a hearing date set, but that would be the next step if the council decides to move forward. And with that, we're happy to answer any questions that we can or research anything that you'd like.
Oliver, did you have any concluding comments before we go to questions?
No, councilors, I don't.
Thank you. So I do have several comments and questions. The first one I'll just ask at this time, I see that the planning commission had two negative votes in support. Can you characterize what were the main concerns of those two opposing votes?
Let me start, and I think Bart will chime in. I think the concern, as the council is aware, they wanted to see, one of the councilors, planning commissioners wanted to see actual fees, and the other was concerned about potential impact on housing affordability. Those were the two things that I recall were primarily their concerns, and we did share with them that what was in front of them is just a procedural approval of the code, that no fees are being proposed by any of the fire district. We don't even know who among the seven fire district will apply. So that was what I recall was their concern, was potential impact on, because they said we just approved the housing option study, and how would this impact housing affordability? And again, the other was wanting to see actual fees before he feels comfortable moving. Any recommendation to council? That's what I recall. I don't want to put their deliberation, you're going to get their meeting minutes verbatim for you also to consider.
Okay, questions by council?
I have a question, Complimency. I know that we've had several fire districts come to talk to us about incorporating fees, and I know that there is some interest into this. So, and I know that in the state of Washington, I believe, and maybe Oliver can speak to this, I think there's only one other county in the state of Washington that incorporates fire impact fees. My concern is the comment about affordable housing, because once you incorporate that fee, then it goes on to the builder, and then it goes on to the buyer. So it makes housing more expensive than it already is. And with us recently raising property tax needs personally, I feel like this is another thing that taxpayers potentially may have to pay. That's my comments.
Yeah, thank you, councilors. I believe it, I believe this Thurston County that assesses impact fees, but I will caveat that to say that majority of the cities within certain counties do assess fire impact fees. And we can research that and come back. Locally here, I believe that the cities of Barrow Ground, maybe Waschugga is Camas also? Maybe Camas do assess impact fees, even though the county is not assessing impact fees. But I'm aware that Barrow Ground, Waschugga, and perhaps Camas do assess fire impact fees. But it is a choice that the council will have to make, or the direction that the council will have to provide.
All right. So then there's, to me, I guess my next question is, then there would be potential for a double impact fee in some instances because some of the cities do fall into the county. No?
Here's what will happen. For example, there are no double school impact fees as an example. So what will happen is that in those cities, take for example Barrow Ground, because the fire district in, I believe it's Fire District 3, expands beyond the city limits of Barrow Ground. So if the district proposes fire impact fees, for example, in the unincorporated portion of the city limits, the city of Barrow Ground may choose to adopt that same fee, so there will be uniformity within that fire district. That's how it will work. You will not have, unless, you know, if you want to use that, the cities and the county want to use that as a tool to encourage development in one district versus the other, that could be, that could happen. I could see that. But other than that, you will have a uniformity in terms of the fire district fees assessed within the city and the unincorporated portion within that particular fire district boundary. That's how it would work. You will not have two separate fees unless by policy you use it to direct growth in one jurisdiction over the other. But other than that, you will have a uniform impact fees across the district.
Thank you for the clarification, Oliver.
You're welcome, councillor.
Thank you, Michelle.
Chair, I have a couple of questions. Thank you, Bart, for your presentation. It was really very clear. I appreciate that. And so what this does, as I understand it, just enables the possibility of impact fees at some point in the future. And it could be, a scenario might be that some districts come forward and some don't, and we don't know what the timing of that even possibly could be.
Exactly. And to elaborate on that a little bit more, and we talked about this in the planning commission hearing for several minutes, the earliest that this could possibly happen because of the comp plan periodic update process that we're working through would be two years, because the districts would have to bring draft capital facilities plans forward and work it through the entire public hearing process, have that totally vetted, and then we would have to, if it were approved, then they would have to negotiate the intergovernmental agreement, interlocal agreements, and get those in place. And then it would have to be added into the comp plan, which the comp plan is, you know, being worked on and hopefully will be, have the updates done in 2025. So that would be the soonest, and that would, everything would have to work perfectly. That would have to go along at the same time as our land use periodic update is happening, which would be tough timing-wise. So the soonest would probably be two years was what we were estimating.
Right. And assume not everything goes absolutely smooth, then it would be...
That's barring any appeals and delays for other issues. And as you mentioned, every district would have to do it independently. Every district would have to justify their fees against the formula with their own capital facilities plan. And so, as Oliver said, that's why, even though it's frustrating, we don't have a grid of numbers that we can put in front of you, because every district has different needs that would come out in their capital facilities plan, and it would change based on their formula and the housing projections and all that in each district.
And so if it wasn't able, if it all didn't come together by June 2025, would then it, there would have to be a comprehensive plan amendment to move forward, or no?
No. If the council approves the changes to Title 40, it would then be, we will be working, assuming we set a date, you asked us to proceed, we set a date in two weeks for your hearing, and you approved the code changes, we will probably come simultaneously with an adopting ordinance that will go into effect. However, like the schools, like other utilities, the school district, the fire district will be working within the confinement of the current comp plan update. And through that process, they will have to submit their capital facilities plan, justifying whatever their needs are, inventory, and, you know, from that, they will have then to develop their, what their impact fee number will be, given their needs. And then that will also, assuming everything works together, you will also be, for example, approving Clark Regional, West Ware Capital Facilities Plan, for example. They don't, we don't know, but you know, they assess system development charges, which you don't approve. But all that is based on the same work that we are doing as part of the comp plan. The school district will do the same thing. We will do the same thing on the traffic impact fee, for example, and parks. You will be approving all of that through what is called the capital facilities plan element to support the comp plan that you're adopting. That's how that will work. When the actual fee will become effective, will also be dependent on the decision of the council. When the fees will become effective, as Bart was saying, there have to be an interlocal agreement between the fire district, in this case, and the county, because the county will be the one collecting the, whatever the fees is through building permit application, because the fees are not collected until the time of building permit application. And that interlocal agreement sets the framework for us to do that on behalf of the fire district, just like we do now for schools, you know?
Thank you. And I did have a question on, I know there's very much a formula in the capital facilities plan and all of that. It's very technical. Is there, do we, as the council approving these fees, have any flexibility in making it higher or lower, or the formula dictates what it is?
The answer is yes and also no. Often, what my experience has been is that, I'll take school, for example, they use the formula, they come up with what the maximum amount is given the formula and what our code prescribed and what the council adopts. The school district board makes a policy decision on whether to access, or they ask the county and the cities, whether to access that maximum or to accept a number they believe is reasonable. You talked about affordable housing and all that, potential impact. They make that decision, and that's what they propose that the council and the cities, where the school district boundaries impact, consider adopting. So that's how it is on. If, assuming the fire district use the formula that you adopt and goes into our code, if they use that formula and come up with a fee that says 1,000, for example, they may make a decision to say, yeah, if we pass a bond and we are successful or the levies, we may use, we may want to lower or propose a lower fee to help augment whatever their needs are. So that's how that will work. But it will come before you for your review and through public hearing and testimony for you to make a determination on what that fee will be.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Yes, thank you for the discussion. I'm just going to add a few comments again, and I've expressed my concern in the past about impact fees, and this is not about fire at all. This is about impact fees for me. In fact, when you are needing to pass a levy, give me a call and I'll be happy to help you put some signs out. I'm fully supportive of fire. It's the impact fees that I struggle with. They are a non-transparent tax is what they are, and they're easy to pass, and they're easy to increase. And it takes away the burden of being accountable to the taxpayer rather than asking the taxpayer to fund those services. Our county is supportive. I don't know of any instance where a needed bond for fire has failed in our county. And everybody that owns a home that was built prior to the late 90s, those homes never paid an impact fee. It's always been in the history of our country that the existing tax base funds the future development. Then once you live here, guess what? You start paying for that future development even though you're already a resident. It's just always the way that it's been. We've all benefited from it prior to the late 90s. And just for instance, I mean, the Camas fire impact fee for 2,500 square foot house, by my calculations, is around $1,700. So this is not something that's little. I feel like the correct process would be dependent, to be depending on the voter to authorize levy increases as they're needed to support the fire. I also, I believe one of the points of conversation in the planning commission was there was a request to create a maximum, they put a maximum of 50% in there because the law says that there has to be a balance between the use of impact fees and other sources of public funding. And there are other instances of other jurisdictions within our county that the impact fees are funding, in some cases, 100% of projects. So I would be supportive of making sure that that maximum is there. I don't think that impact fees are the right way to do this. I also feel like it might create an extra hurdle when we do go to pass levies with a sentiment of, well, you guys just got a bunch more money from impact fees, so why do you need those levies? So that's one of my concerns as well. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. Karen, did you have any questions? I think you might be on mute.
Thank you. I don't have questions, per se. I find myself, as time goes along on this particular issue, becoming less and less supportive of creating this complex statutory framework where a... supportive of creating this complex statutory framework where a simple and usually supported, I think maybe always supported, I don't know, levy is what works and what the, the population, I think, expects more from us. So as a consequence, I, I am finding myself that I will be opposed to a vote on, that would be favorable on this particular proposal, even though, as one of our other counselors said, I certainly am supportive of the fees that are needed, the funds that are needed for an excellent fire program. Those are my comments.
Thank you. So let me try to couch my comments into a question. So I think that Battleground did a good job. They've consolidated their brick and mortar, their rolling stock, the available firefighting sources, you know, more of a regional model. I don't know if there's still challenges for Battleground or the immediate vicinity. I, I know we all do mutual support, whether it's law enforcement or firefighting. And we lost Larch Mountain Immediate Work Crew, and I know they still exist, but now they're at a distance and minutes count when you have a raging fire, wildfire, wildfire. So Battleground seems to be doing okay. I mean, I'm in favor of regional models and, and funding streams. And, and I agree with Glenn, it would be great to have the public be able to vote on these. And, and I'm unaware as well of any levy not passing. And please correct me, so that's part one of the questions. Has, has a levy in the last 10 or 20 years actually failed to help capital improvements and, and firefighting needs? But shifting from Battleground, then I look at Camas Washougal and Glenn again mentioned the high impact fees there, and they're still struggling to partner with Washougal and figure out those funding streams. How do we make this work? And as far as I know, that struggle still continues as to how they're partnering on a combined effort to have what essentially is a regional model. What's the benefit of having these impact fees? Will these impact fees help in any way with an issue like Battleground confronted and, and solved, I think? But Camas Washougal has not solved it. I mean, is this a better, what are the advantages? Is this a better funding model for, for the chiefs that are in the room and the leadership of our firefighters? You know, what, what are the pluses and minuses of going to this kind of impact fees? And you know, as this has come to the county, I have expressed support for these impact fees despite the fact we have some of the highest fees on our development in, in the state. And that's really counterproductive and especially to add one more. So anyway, can, can you give me a better idea of what, what the benefits are and whether it would solve some of the issues we're seeing in some of our cities?
Councilor Medvee, chair, that's, that's a challenging question for staff to address. I think it will be better addressed by the fire district chiefs. They are in a better position to provide you a better answer than I can. I am aware, and I don't want to speak off the cuff, but I'm aware that perhaps Fire District Three levy or bond did fail, did not pass. I don't know what the rationale for that is. Some people would theorize that it's, it's a tax, for example. Others would disagree that it's a way to fund the necessary capital needs of any fire district. So they will be in a better position to answer that. We too favor regional models where it is possible. One of the challenges we have is that the fire district boundaries, in some cases, are set by law and they proceeded the Growth Management Act, so you can change it. So that, we had a similar issue with the school districts' boundaries. It couldn't be amended because it superseded the GMA passage. So it becomes difficult to go about consolidation, if you will. I believe, if my memory serves me well, that was tried in Ridgefield School District and La Center, trying to find a way to combine and have a regional or one school district. That didn't succeed. That was a long time ago. But because those boundaries were pre-GMA, it becomes very difficult to propose changing the boundaries and making it a regional model.
Oliver, can we pause on that? So what I'm hearing though, I, I didn't know about that challenge. I was wondering how the districts are formed and why we didn't have some flexibility. Is that a legislative fix? Is that something that's come up before the legislature? I'm sure this isn't the only county dealing with the, the alignment issue, especially during high periods of growth over decades that have moved, the need to move fire stations, to move resources to different locations. Is this a, has this been something proposed for legislature to kind of grapple with?
I, I'm recalling that that issue had been brought up before, but I think if my memory serves me well, in the case of between Ridgefield and, no, Ridgefield and La Center, I think the opposition was because the boundaries were superseded the GMA and they couldn't do anything about it. So, but that's what I recall. It is something that, you know, we can look into and if it's something that the council wants to consider because other district is not unique to Clark County here, but other fire district and other areas are experiencing the same thing. And it's, you know, people call it voting with your feet. And people move around depending on where they believe services and, you know, they feel more appropriate to be in, whether in the school district because of the level of, or quality of education that school district provide, people move there for that reason. But the school district, you know, the fire district will be in a better position to talk about their needs and how the impact fee, if approved, will help mitigate some of the growth that they are seeing within their own particular district and what they need is all. I don't know what a cost for fire engine, for example, is. I don't know that. And other operators, I don't know that. They will be in a better position to answer your question that you are.
So let me just refocus one of the areas that I wanted to see if you had an answer to. So what I envision is if these impact fees are passed, excuse me, you know, the funding stream comes along with brains, you know, buildings, people, you know, as development comes in, it brings this additional resource to where that development was through an impact fee. Would that help with the issues that Camas Washougal or, or any of the districts that you mentioned that tried to consolidate but could not? Does this better mirror where the resourcing is needed? Does it make it easier instead of a levy for the individual districts to sweat it out, if you will, through the political process? I'm looking for what is the advantage of switching to this kind of tax stream model?
Counselors, all I can say is that they will, you know, the fire chiefs will tell you that the fire impact fee will assist them in meeting their needs. Like I said, I don't know what the cost of a fire engine or even a facility will be and the level of responses that they're seeing and the personnel that they need to help mitigate the growth that they're seeing in their district. They will argue that it will help. Or I have listened to some school district argue that the reason their bond fell or something is that folks within their district are making the argument that they are not assessing the maximum fees that they should. So there's a couple of issues that come up, but the, the fire chiefs will be in a better position to answer what their needs are and how they believe the impact fees, no matter how small that is. Because you take funding for school, for example, they get funding from the state and they get, in some cases, they pass levy or bond, but still they will tell you that they need the impact fees to help augment their, the, the level of growth that they see. So they will make that case for you. How often do they go to the people to ask for levies and bonds?
Just a quick clarifying question. The fees are for capital, they're not for people. So I want to make sure that that's clear because I know that question kind of came up of if there's a staffing issue or people. This is really about capital facilities, whether it's stations, trucks, engines, whatever the case may be.
Right. Thank you. Thank you. I was just being very broad on their funding stream needs. So you keep mentioning the fire chiefs. Are they prepared to present this morning or was that something that wasn't?
Normally work sessions, council would have to approve. I mean, you can certainly do that. The majority of council supports it, but normally we approve it ahead of time. And as Oliver said, during a hearing, if there will be a hearing, they'll be presenting there as well, but it's up to.
We do have about 20 minutes left.
I would appreciate hearing from the fire chiefs and the number of them in the room just to hear about the, the funding struggles and how this might help.
And I saw a positive nod from Councilor Young. Any objection by those online? All right, who's first?
Brief question. I thought that we already had a presentation from the fire chiefs.
We did some time ago, and I'm hoping this is an ongoing process that we have an open mind to try to figure out the best for how to fight fires. I mean, I think besides law enforcement, public safety and fire suppression is amongst our most important responsibilities as a council. So I, I want to have the, the best possible funding stream and make it self-assured. I, I did not know that we had had a levy fail, like you just mentioned. So anyway, yeah, we did have a presentation, but this is specific to some code changes. And my questions were, what's the advantage? What's the disadvantage to going to these impact fees? So I'm hoping, you know, Oliver just pointed towards the chiefs as having the best information on how this would improve their ability to manage their fighting firefighting assets. Thank you, chief, for stepping forward. If you could just say what district you're from.
Gordon Brooks, Clark County Fire District 10. We're the northeastmost district in Clark County. We are a small, relatively population-wise district, approximately 12,000. At one time, we were the largest fire district physically, but everyone else has grown physically where we have not. I am, in my area, a newcomer to the county. I moved to Clark County in 1984 and people in my area still consider me a newcomer. In speaking with my citizens, they support impact fees. When I look at my budget for 2024, new construction is approximately 1% of my budget. Our budget is, is set up with a growth factor that follows the Consumer Price Index. We passed a six-year levy a couple of years ago. In 2007, 2008, we attempted to run a levy and those two levies failed miserably. The people that we spoke with supported it, but because of the economy felt they needed to vote their pocketbook. And in our conversation with them, and we called every single phone number in my district, many of the people supported us but had to vote their pocketbook. So we're in the process of building a new fire station in, to cover our west end, the area that covers La Center, Woodland, that area. We can't afford to build a new fire station. We're moving a modular home in. Cost of the building that we'd initially planned was about $200,000. The engineering fees would be almost half that if we had hired a consultant to do the work. We've done the work ourselves and we've been working on this process for over a year and we are still waiting for approval of our plans. Now, one of the things that I have is when I moved to the area, I lived in the Green Mountain School District and within a few years became a member of that school board. And I was a member of the school board when we enacted impact fees in that area. Green Mountain Schools has always used those impact fees only to fund a portion of the engineering for any growth or construction. Impact fees do not fund buildings. They don't collect enough money to fund those things. So we, and I'm, I'm looking at growth in my area. The building that was sufficient for my fire district when it was initially formed in 1961 was fantastic for the needs of the area then. We have grossly outgrown that building. When I started as a firefighter in 1988, we ran 150 calls. This year we were, or 2023, we were over 1,000. Our growth since 2017 has been almost 30% in Colvilleham. What I hear from my citizens is they feel it's unfair that they've lived there for 40 years and been paying and now they're having, being asked to fund a new building. That's, that's my perspective. Counselor Young, you said the Camas impact fees for fire were approximately $1,700. Do you know what the school impact fees or the traffic impact fees for those?
Oh, I know they're probably substantially larger, yes.
Right.
It's, it's all a matter of whether it's five cents here, a dollar here, it all adds up to one lump and increases the price of housing is, but yes, you're correct. It is likely.
Significantly more for those things, yes. And, you know, for our building, our, our traffic impact fees for fire station are fairly significant.
Questions before the chief steps down and we, okay, let's have the next. So thank you so much for stepping into the breach, if you will.
Hi, my name's John Norman, Fire Chief of Clark County Fire Rescue. We cover unincorporated Clark County, the cities of Woodland, Ridgefield, and La Center are annexed into our district. We're everything north of 179th and west of Battleground. I want to thank my commissioners for coming to, two of my five elected commissioners, Jade Burke and Larry Bartell are here today, as well as the fire chief from District 13, Yakult, Bryce Shirley, so the fire chief from District 3 here. I wanted to make sure I didn't miss anybody. So part of the issue is, fire districts generally have, fire districts and regional fire authorities have a single source of income, which is property tax. We don't have the ability to collect sales tax or, or other fees without some other governmental agency allowing it to happen. So this really restricts our ability to be flexible in how we fund. There was a question, what's a fire engine cost? Well, we just bought two new fire engines. They won't be delivered till 2026, $980,000 apiece. When you put sales tax on top of it, that's up to about $1 million and $50,000 per rig. Fire District 6, and I should acknowledge also, Fire District 6 Chief Kristen Mauer is online with us today also. They just bought a ladder truck, $2 million, right? So this, it, it's an expensive service, but Chair Medvee, I really appreciate that you recognize that it's a very valuable service to the community. We're out there making a difference in the lives of people every day in our firefighting and our emergency medical service provision. As mentioned before, Fire District 3 failed a levy last year, a levy lid lift. And so we as fire districts have to oftentimes go back to. And so we, as fire districts, have to oftentimes go back to our voters and ask for a levy lid lift. We are statutorily maxed out at $1.50,000. So if we want to fund and keep up with the cost of doing business, as our levy drops back, we have to go back to the voters periodically. Our CCFR is probably going to go to the voters in August for a levy lid lift, because we can't keep up with the cost of doing business. One of the things I hear repeatedly in our communities, though, at community meetings, is that people are tired of, just as Chief Brooks mentioned, they've lived in the district forever, and they see all this new building happening. So in unincorporated Clark County, in our area, 179th and Northeast 50th, is a 400-house subdivision going in. It's about half-built out right now. And so as they come in, it puts wear and tear on our fire engine that's at the Dollar's Corner Station, so we have to replace it sooner. It's out of service more often because it's serving those folks. And the people have lived here forever saying, why isn't development helping pay for this? So development pays for roads to go in, development pays for schools, helps offset the cost of schools, development pays for parks, development pays for all these things. And they come to us, and when I say, hey, will you step up and pay more to support all this new development? They say, why don't you get it from the developers? So that's why we're here today. I'm meeting the needs of my citizens that are saying, hey, chief, why don't you get impact fees? So the way it's structured in state law is that for the counties to collect, for the unincorporated areas, the county legislative body, the county council, has to authorize the fire districts to be able to collect those fees. And as Oliver said through an ILA, you collect them, because this is where the permitting happens, and then you, and when we show a capital facility plan that actually shows a need, it puts it out. At CCFR, we have six stations. Technically, we have five stations, and we share a station with Fire District 6, the Public Safety Complex on 179th. But out of those stations, we need another one built on the west side of Ridgefield that will cover Ridgefield and unincorporated Clark County. We need to finish a station in Woodland. We need, and by the way, Woodland does collect impact fees for us, but that station, Woodland, serves the city of, and then the rural area and unincorporated Northwest County. And we need to replace a fire station in the Dollar's Corner area. And so we need to maximize our ability to get funding streams that is fair across the board to all of the citizens in the area, so that we can continue to provide those services.
Sue?
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much, and to all of the chiefs for coming in to talk to us about this. I would really like to see this go forward and give the public an opportunity to participate in this conversation about paying for growth and development and, you know, the real costs that go along with that growth and development. I'm familiar with 179th and, you know, the lifting of the urban holding there. There will ultimately, I think, be 3,000 or 4,000 new homes in that area. And just watching what's happened with the Ridgefield School District over the years, because there's been a horrendous amount of growth there, and where they were able to routinely pass their bonds and levies, that is not the case anymore. And what I heard, really, I think, more than anything, as I was running for office, is concerns about growth, the roads, the services, the school district, you know, all of the services that are needed to go along with that, and why doesn't growth pay for itself? So for decades, we've had impact fees, and fundamentally, with trying to finance anything, the more diverse sources of revenue that you have, the more sustainable you will be. You know, the county, I'm sure, would like to see a few more revenue sources ourselves. But I think this is a reasonable request. It's needed. I think it applies some fairness overall for people who've lived here forever and for people who are moving in. And I don't know exactly how much, whatever the fee may be, will increase the price of a house. There are multiple factors that are contributing to the cost of a house and the cost to rent and affordable housing, and we certainly have a crisis there. But I think we can't just say no to really adequately funding all of the capital expenses that are going on, that are needed related to the growth that we're experiencing. It has a cost, and we need to pay that if we're going to really be able to protect people. Thank you.
Chair, if I could make two more points. Thank you for that. That $1,700 fire impact fee in CAMIS seems very high. Chief Sorensen could mention that in Battleground and the proposed fee in unincorporated Clark County within Fire District 3, I think, is closer to the $300 range. As we work on our capital facility plan at CCFR, we'd be looking at residential facilities closer to the $300 range, slightly different for multifamily, and then it would be a cent, a cents per square foot on commercial. So that, I do know some folks at CAMIS. I'll see if I can get a verification of what that would be.
Sure. I looked up there, I mean, it could be incorrect because I just looked it up quickly, but it showed that it was 68 cents per square foot.
Okay. On residential also?
Yes.
Oh, okay, okay. The second one I'd like to make, and I'd like to put this on your radar, and I recognize this is about fire impact fees, but when we talk about fundamental fairness and taxation and funding streams and that, there's a new law in the state called tax increment financing. And in unincorporated Clark County, along the 10th Avenue corridor from 179th to 219th, the Port of Ridgefield is unilaterally implementing tax increment financing in that area that will cost this fire district millions of dollars. It will cost CCFR millions of dollars, as well as Fire District 6, in future income with the development that comes. In addition, the city of Ridgefield did tax increment financing. The reason I point this out is cities, counties, and port districts are considered public entities for tax increment financing. So at some point, I'm concerned that the county council is going to put up some type of tax increment financing someplace that's going to further erode the income of a fire district, because it's, we are fully based on property tax. So I would love to have a work session or one-on-ones with any one of you to talk about the very limited income streams and the attacks that are happening on our income right now that is not only keeping it steady, but eroding it away. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on.
Chair, I have a comment on that.
Please, go ahead.
Councilor Marshall and I were attending the Fire District 6 presentation last night to go over that taxation, and I was going to forward that information to Kathleen about that to support them, support against it, actually. So thank you. I think that would be great information to bring to all the council.
Thank you. Chief?
Morning, Council. I'm Scott Sorensen. I'm Fire Chief, Fire District 3, which covers Brush Prairie, Battleground, Hyacinth, Benner'sburg, and the Rossin Road area. Thank you for listening to us this morning and considering this proposal. There's been a lot of question about what it actually means, and I can tell you what it means in the city of Battleground. Based on our growth estimates and our capital needs, our current fees are $3.37 per apartment unit, 85 cents for a commercial per square foot, and $6.97 for residential, which represents 5% of the total impact fees that are implemented in the city of Battleground, to include schools and the others. Annually, that brings in about 100 to 150,000 a year for us. That's a drop in the bucket for what we need. We need a new fire station. We need new engines. We're currently using some of those fees to help pay down a ladder truck that we purchased and also two new fire engines a couple of years ago. So I just wanted to give you some, you know, real numbers on our capital facilities plan. Those would be similar in the county area. We did it for the entire district. And I'd like to echo what has been said about what the citizens are saying on the ground about paying for new growth. There's a lot of frustration about new growth out there and how we fund it. And yes, there are people that have lived there for a long time and have paid for all these facilities. We've paid as we've gone for many years in Fire District 3, and with this growth happening, we aren't able to keep up. So when we run a levy, one of the concerns is, is funding the new growth with the levy for people that have lived in the area for a long time. And I've heard it over and over again. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be able to answer on that actual.
So I was going to ask this of the last, and I'm assuming this comes from that very complicated formula, but so with commercial properties particularly, it's not related to the number of employees or the number of people coming and going? It's by square foot, and it's a lesser amount? Where does that come from?
We, well, part, so when you establish the capital facilities plan, you look at call volumes, you look at population growth. So we attach a certain number of responses to different types of facilities, and that's the basis for that determination. If that, is that?
Other questions or comments? When I said we had about 20 minutes left, I was thinking about our old council time schedule, starting at 10:00 a.m. This is important. So I want to be substantive, not just mindful of arbitrary time. So are there any questions by council? Do we have any other speakers?
Excuse me, my name's Bryce Shirley. I'm the chief of Fire District 13, which is relatively small by comparison to the rest of the chief's district. I think it's 36 square miles. I can tell you that funding is exceptionally different, especially with such a small tax base. The limitations that we have essentially make it so Fire District 13 is almost incapable of continually sustaining itself going forward with the growth that's occurring. That's just speaking to the fact of compensating personnel, dealing with facilities that have been placed, in place for, in Fire District 13's case, almost 100 years. And so what you're really talking about is the ability for first responders to continue to keep up with what's occurring in our communities, and that's becoming more and more difficult. In the case of North Country, which I am also the chief for, we recently, we're just about to finish an EMS station that costed close to $6 million and was only, we're only able to make that happen with an ARPA grant from the county. There's no way the EMS district could absorb that cost. Of course, you can go out for bonds and things of that nature, but you risk the chance of that being voted down. And so the decision that you're making is very important, not only for fire suppression, but also first responders. It's not just firefighting. It's responding to people's houses on a first-line basis when it comes to whatever medical emergency might be going on. So a high percentage of what the fire district does. And so in terms of public safety, obviously, kind of beating a dead horse here, but the decision is very important, especially for the future, because we're talking about years down the road, this is going to impact us. And so you won't probably see the impact now. It's already a problem now. You're dealing with the issue in the future and funding these capital facilities and equipment, which is very important for small districts like mine in North Clark County.
Thank you. Questions by council? Okay, hearing none. So I just want to make a couple of comments, because I may be in the minority here, and at some point, we're going to have to gauge that. I think what resonates with me, number one, is, you know, I was really embarrassed when we approved the development agreements up in the 179th for the lifting of the urban holding area, because that became palpably obvious that we had among the highest impact fees in the state. And I'm like, why is that? That's not what I want to see. I want to see the lowest. You know, we have a housing crisis. We have homeless that are related to that because of housing unavailability, increase rents because of rentals not being available, and then the pressure that puts on our mobile home parks, our RV camping, and our homeless. You know, it's all related. You know, so wanting to reduce those fees, I realize that from my point of view, and it's something I've also been tilting at since the whole time I've been here, you know, we need to reduce or streamline our permitting process. There needs to be a deliberate outcome within a reasonable period of time at least cost, aside from the impact fees. You know, I'm looking, always looking for efficiency, looking to streamline time, because time, every week that goes by costs developers money, a lot of money, and that impacts our housing stock. You know, I'm looking to rely on engineer stamp, so we don't replicate, charge extra money, take extra time for redundant county actions that may not be necessary to ensure compliance with our code. So I'm going to separate that, because the other thing that resonates for me is the equity issue that's been raised very eloquently and articulately by the chiefs. And I've heard that before, and we've heard that during presentations before. You know, there's a lot of new development. I think it's with our taxing system that we have in the state and not able to correct any districting border alignments, I think it's palpably fair to put the burden on capital costs for our first responders for both medical and fire. And I had focused on fire, but obviously, the medical is every day of the year, not just during fire season. It is palpably fair to put these costs on new development. And I think the existing population agrees with that, and we've heard that stated anecdotally that, you know, those levies that have failed, failed in part because of that unfairness, that why are we paying for this new development? And the impacts it has on our ability to keep up with capital needs, whether it's rolling stocker or fire, brick and mortar. You know, luckily, we did have the ARPA funds to benefit the North County District, but, you know, those are gone. We won't have that opportunity again. So anyway, I support this wholeheartedly. The other thing that I want to point out, that Oliver did point out initially, this doesn't, this isn't about raising fees today. This is about changing code to allow the opportunity in the future as an option, as a different funding option. So I am in favor of moving forward with this, but we're going to need to see if we have a majority of the council to do so.
I agree with everything you just said, and I support it, moving forward.
Glenn?
Yeah, so just a couple of comments, and this is not meant to make any arguments, I promise, but just food for thought. And that is, when people have lived in an area for 40 years, and they're upset about paying for the new development, I understand that. But the thing that they need to understand is, when they moved there 40 years ago, there was infrastructure there that they did not pay for. You know, so it is just a continuation of what they had received four years ago. And then the second thing that I would like to say is that it is not new development that pays this, it is housing that pays for this. It is the price of housing that pays for this. So those are the two things that I would say. Thank you.
So just to be clear, you don't support moving forward at this point on changing code?
I believe in the public process, so I would probably vote to move it forward to a public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Michelle?
I support moving it forward to a public hearing, as Councilor Young suggested.
Karen?
I would also support moving it forward to a public hearing. But I've got to say that as I look over the options for funding throughout the county, the support that we need for our fire and first responders in that area, I don't think we have the answer. To have a few that are on impact fees and a few that have been approved by levy and some that have dealt with this horror of the levying not passing, and I say horror because once one has gone through that whole process, and then it doesn't pass, it really is exhausting. once one has gone through that whole process, and then it doesn't pass, it really is exhausting. But I just think we don't have the answer right now. So to put it to a public hearing, I believe, is the right thing to do.
Okay. Did you need anything else then, Oliver, as far as guidance?
Excuse me, councilors. No, I got what we needed. It's not my call. It's council call. So we work with the council's office to schedule a date for your hearing.
Thank you. And so I have one residual ask. I'm unaware. You know, I know that we have chiefs and a sheriff's lobbying group statewide, and I'm wondering if the fire departments do as well, because I would be interested in seeing if they had a proposal for our legislature on how to make this easier for you. And just realigning borders would seem to be a big first step, and I don't know if that's ever come into committee, out of committee, ever been proposed, and whether or not you have proposed legislation on behalf of first responders statewide. So I just throw that out there, and maybe Jordan can look into that as well as a policy advisor. Anyway, I think that concludes our session. We do have our new schedule at 1:00, so we have plenty of time for rest and rehabilitation and food. So with that, thank you off and off the cuff, making presentations. I think that probably carried the day. Thank you. We'll be adjourned until 1:00.